Hi, I'm Jeremy Crosby.
And I'm Nick Boucher. We're your hosts for the program that's all about your city, Talking Pittsburgh.
Every weekday, we pull together the news, events, and information you need to stay on top of what's happening in the city of Pittsburgh.
Find Talking Pittsburgh on cable TV, Roku, Amazon Fire, Apple TV, and our live stream on the web. Plus, you can find all our headlines and stories on Facebook, YouTube, and our video on-demand service. This is your city.
Keep up with Talking Pittsburgh and the issues affecting you and your neighbors.
Want to know what's happening in your city? Get notify me messages from the city of Pittsburgh. Visit fitchburgwi.gov on your computer or mobile device and select the big notify me button on the left. Enter your email and/or phone number, whichever is best for you to get notifications. Scroll down the list and select all the topics you're interested in to receive email or text messages about. You'll be notified every time one of your topics is updated. Sign up for notify me. One more way to keep up with your Pittsburgh government.
Listo? Okay. Good evening, everyone, to the Pittsburgh Common Council meeting for October 28, 2025. We are calling to the order to the meeting at 6:31 PM. First, please stand up for the place of allegiance. Okay, next roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Rataferada.
Here.
Alder Dancer Jr.
Here.
Alder Gerhardt.
Here.
Alder Herps.
Here.
Alder Jetzer.
Here.
Alder Lotte Say.
Here.
Alder Malinato is absent with excuse. Alder Regstad.
Here.
You do have a quorum, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So next, we move to item four. It's public appearance for non-agenda items and new appointments. And tonight, we have a mayor appointment. For I am nominating Colleen Butler for the Community Equity Advisory Committee. The term will expire on April 18, 2028. So, Colleen, can you come to the microphone and tell us? Yes. Tell us why you are interested in joining the committee and who you are and all of that.
Sure. So my name's Colleen Butler. I've lived in the Dane County area for pretty much my whole adult life. And most of my time, I was in Madison, Wisconsin, and I was the Race and Gender Equity Director at YWCA Madison. And during COVID, I moved to Pittsburgh and have just been feeling in recent months that I'd like to get more involved in the Pittsburgh community and just be more connected to local government and local issues kind of on the ground. Right now, I'm no longer at YWCA, but I work with a small consulting company called the Nina Collective. We are a cooperative made up of consultants who do equity and inclusion work with organizations nationally, but really, much of our work is in Dane County and Wisconsin. So we've got a lot of local connections here. So I got a little bit about my background. I don't know if you have anything that would be helpful for me to share more about or if anyone has any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any question comments for Colleen? No? Okay.
I'll move. You want to move?
Go.
I'll move approval of Colleen for the Community Equity Advisory Committee.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of appointing Colleen Butler to the Community Equity Advisory Committee, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. Congratulations and thank you. Okay, so next we move to item five. Five is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
I need someone. Ah, okay. Who did it? You?
I don't know.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. So next, we move to the administrator's report.
Good evening, everyone. I'll start with some events, some of which are a reminder from two weeks ago, but they are upcoming. First one, this Thursday, October 30th, at 10:00 AM will be the groundbreaking program for the UW Health Meritor Life Point Rehabilitation Hospital in Uptown. Also, this Thursday, October 30th, from 11:15 AM to 1:15 PM will be the annual Pittsburgh Business Luncheon hosted by the city and its Economic Development Department. That'll be held at the BTC in the Promega campus. Halloween is this Friday. I assume all of you have your costumes ready to roll. Recommended trick-or-treat hours from the city is 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And of course, we always urge anyone who is out and about that evening to take a little bit of extra caution than they normally would. Watch your speed, keep your cellphones down, and please pay attention for all the youngsters who are out trick-or-treating. The next, Pittsburgh Chamber Business After Four event will be their annual Better Together event. That is one in which a number of area chambers of commerce come together and have kind of an outsized networking event. That'll be held November 12th, beginning at 4:30 PM at the Barnwood Events Center located on Larson Road just outside the city of Pittsburgh. The Hub project is nearing completion, and the ribbon cutting will be November 4th. I'm sorry, November 24th, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. Sine Road is reopening in mid-November. There's still some work that needs to be finished from a restoration standpoint, some striping and some signal configuration. It is still closed. I think that it might be a bit attractive to drive on currently, but as a reminder, it is closed, and there is still work that needs to take place. So if our motoring public could stay out of that, that would be helpful. We had a meeting, the mayor, village president, village administrator from Oregon, as well as the mayor of Verona and the city administrator of Verona this morning. It was our second meeting in regards to conversation related to a joint fire and EMS exploration. All three communities' boards and/or councils are supportive of continuing the conversation and determining what next steps might be appropriate. So we'll look to keep the common council staff and community informed as we continue down the conversation. Some park-related updates. The Tower Hill Shelter renovation project is complete. The Southdale Playground replacement is also complete. With colder weather coming in, our Parks Department and Rec Department is beginning our colder weather preparations. Our shelter rental season is ending, as well as other preps taking place. The Parks and Forestry Manager position has been filled. We are pleased to be announcing that Eric Schreiner, who is currently with the city of Lake Mills, will be beginning in that role on November 3rd. We welcome Eric to the city of Pittsburgh. The paperwork for April election for candidates should be available from the city clerk's office in mid-November for anyone who might be interested in obtaining that paperwork. And then finally, the current alder vacancy in District 4. The deadline to submit applications for any interest in that position is November 4th at 4:00 PM, and those applications are due to the city clerk's office by that time. Any questions for me?
Any question? Okay.
So Sine Road will not open November 3rd, as previously stated?
Sine Road will not open on November 3rd, as previously stated. I regret to inform you.
Oh, why?
Tim Bulker had mentioned in the department head meeting this. There's a scheduling issue in regards to the traffic signal configuration.
I remember now, yes.
Fitchrona Road is open.
No. Opened on the 17th, I think.
Fitchrona Road. You're talking up by?
Quarry.
Jamestown Quarry.
Yeah.
Yes, in fact, that may already be open.
Yeah, yeah.
And do we know if we have a joint fire district? Do we know yet whether that would qualify for innovation funds?
We do not know, but I think that there is a very good possibility that it might. Yeah.
Good question. Any other question? Okay, thank you, chat. So next, we move into the mayor's report. And I have a couple of things that I would like to mention first. I want to say that today, October 28th, is the National Fire Responder Day. So this day is dedicated to honor for the courage and sacrifices of the firefighters, police officers, EMTs, paramedics, and other emergency personnel. So I want to thank you, our Pittsburgh Fire Responder, our police officer, firefighter, paramedics, for all you do for our community and keep us safe. Something that I want to mention, that you already received an invitation, is the Pittsburgh Forum on Housing and Smart Growth. It's coming on November 11th. No, November 13th, from 1:30 to 3:00 PM. It's going to be at the library. So the other thing that is out there is we are. There are applications for names for the hub park. So this application will be open until December 22nd. So we are requesting some names. So you mentioned about the meeting with Verona and, yeah. So the fire union contract, the update is that the city will go to arbitration, and arbitration day will be February 4th, '26. So I attended EMS Annual Meeting a couple of weeks last week. I also attended the Great Madison Chamber of Commerce Annual Dinner, and it was great to see a lot of our partners there. As always, I have my monthly meeting with the Chief Morales and Sever. I don't know if you have noticed something in the, in Fire Station 1? There is a shipping container. Do you know why? So the shipping container is being used for a train in place. So this is another place. This is a very innovative, you know, and cheap option to train. So you can take a look at that, and we are planning to buy a couple of more of those, and they can be used by the police and by the firefighters. So I want to say, this was a very. I think that it's very common that they use shipping container for training, but yeah, we purchased our first one. As you know, the police facility is under construction. They are going to put the concrete on November 14th. You mentioned the, da-da-da. That's it. And there is a couple of events for this week. It's going to be busy for me and for some of you with all the events that are coming to the city. The other thing that I am working is the mayor awards. So you have any business that you want to recommend me? Please send me an email or reach out to me. So this award, we are planning to do this award on the last council meeting in November. I don't know which day is November 25th, okay? That's it. Any question? Yes?
Availability of the arbiter? Or I was curious why it's out in February, the arbitration hearing with the firefighters?
Yeah, a combination of arbitrator availability and an opportunity for both the Fire Department Union and the city to prepare its case for the hearing arbitrator.
Thank you.
So what I want to mention is, in order to prepare for the arbitration, there is a lot of data that we need to collect. It's going to be a lot of staff capacity absorbed in that project. Plus, you know, our attorney fee are going to. Yeah, it's not fun. Okay, so next we move.
I have a motion, Mayor. I'd like to move item 9A3, which is Resolution R 19425, the TIF Agreement for Lido Apartments, to now on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of moving item 9A3 up to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. Okay. So what is this?
I'll move approval of Resolution R 19425, approving a TIF development agreement between the city of Pittsburgh and the Lido Apartments LLC.
Second.
And I may let Mike Summerman give the introduction to this.
Okay. Thank you, Alder Gerhardt. Appreciate it. We're excited to be here tonight with our private sector partner, Avante Properties, for their next project in Uptown Pittsburgh. The Lido Apartments, 114-unit development. In our discussions with them, we encourage them to go big. As you know, Uptown is envisioned to be our higher-density urban mixed-use neighborhood, and this project fits that bill. As part of that request, it's led to some extraordinary costs for the project, which are included in the TIF developer agreement. And then they are also partnering with us on our workforce with the market rate pilot project, where 10% of the units in the building would be for folks that are at 60% of median income. So we've got two parts to the developer agreement here. One would be a pay-as-you-go developer bond for the extraordinary cost of 2.05, and then the workforce housing offset, which approximates about 877,000, and that covers the rental differential between the market rate units and the affordable rents. And then it includes a 25% addition for administration marketing certification through WEDA with an H, and also a little bit of a development incentive upside for doing that program for us. So we're excited about the project. I'll let Chris talk a little bit more about it. The Plan Commission saw some great renderings last week. And then joining us via Zoom is our financial advisor, Keith from Ellers, and our attorney that worked on the developer agreement, Robert Proctor from Axley.
Okay, so who is going to go first? You, Chris?
Yeah, I'll just give a little history. This project started as a result of our land sale here recently to Life Point UW Health for their rehab hospital. They've just broken ground. You see them moving dirt out on the end of East Cheryl, on the east end of East Cheryl. The slot's right next door on the roundabout of Lacy and East Cheryl. And as Mike mentioned, we added a second parking deck to increase the density on the site. And along with some extraordinary soil conditions, bedrock, that we're addressing and wrapping that parking ramp with townhomes results in our extraordinary expenses. And then we've been working with the city on the workforce housing component. 10% of the units will be affordable to 60% median income families and individuals. So that's a new process for us, a new process for the city, and we're learning as we go here, but are figuring out how to, the compliance reports with WEDA and how to market those units at a different price point. So looking to break ground as soon as December 1st here, if everything keeps moving along, and would be opening in May of 2027.
Thank you. Any question? Come, I don't know, Keith, do you want to add anything else?
Yeah, good evening. My name's Keith Dahl. I'm a municipal advisor at Ellers, the city's financial consultant. Ultimately, where we got to where we are this evening with the development agreement in front of you for, which effectively lays out the municipal revenue obligation note of $2,050,000 and workforce housing offset of approximately $877,000, we went through a pro forma analysis at Ellers, meaning we collected the developers' financial information, and we wanted to review all that information under current market environment conditions. And we wanted to review the sources and uses. We wanted to compare them against general industry standards for other projects that are requesting public assistance. We also reviewed the operating pro forma to make sure that rents were reasonable within the market. We also were looking at the operating expenses, the timing of construction, but ultimately, the return on investment to the developer. When any city or public entity provides public assistance, it's essential to do diligence and make sure that you're providing the minimum amount of public financial assistance needed to make the project financially feasible to move forward. Developers need to attract at least the equity and the lending institutions to buy into their development, so they need to be able to show a reasonable return on investment. So ultimately, with the amount that is contained within the development agreement, we have two components. The first is the municipal revenue obligation note for what we deem the extraordinary costs. This is in the principal amount of $2,050,000, and there is an interest rate component to this that will be paid out over time. Ultimately, this is not upfront assistance that the city is providing to the development. It is a piece of paper that they are going to take and monetize with their lending institution. You're essentially committing future tax increment that is generated from this project, and you're willing to pay a portion of that back to the developer. You will be paying about 2/3 increment, and you'll be capturing 1/3 of that increment over the 13-year anticipated timeline for this level of public assistance. In addition, the workforce housing offset of roughly $877,000 will be paid out to the developer for reserving the 10% of units affordable within this project to households that earn no more than 60% of the average median income. This affordability term will last 15 years from issuance of the certificate of occupancy after the building is constructed. And this will, or could, come from a number of different funding sources. There will be enough tax increment generated in addition to what is paid out to the developer on that municipal revenue obligation note for the extraordinary costs to make this payment and still have increment left available to the city over that duration. You could also look at it from the Affordable Housing Fund or some other fund of the city to be able to make these workforce housing offset payments. So ultimately, that is the information that is contained within the development agreement and the analysis memo included in your packet.
Okay, thank you. I have a question. I don't know if you guys asked a question in Finance Committee. I don't remember. So how this, the assessment of this building will be affected? Because we are going to have 10% of the unit affordable? I don't know who can answer the question.
That would be a question for our city's assessor. I'm not going to try to wade into that one. I'm sorry. So if you want, I can certainly look at getting a response from the city assessor to share with the common council.
Because sometime, this is what happens when we have affordable housing. Okay.
Yeah, I guess as long as you're talking to the assessor. I mean, the construction cost is projected to be 29.6 million, and the city assessor said that likely the property would be assessed for about 22 million, which is significantly lower. So if he had any commentary that he could add about that as well, that'd be helpful.
That may be taking into consideration the workforce housing units. I'll confirm, though.
Yeah, but that's not going to amount to that much difference.
No, but we need to know that from future development. Any other questions? Dave?
I'm sorry, I'm not finding it here. What TID district is this? And when was it projected to close?
This is number 13, and it will close in 13 years? Yeah.
Thank you.
Mike or really anyone, Keith or Robert, anyone chime in? Can someone just talk about PEGO as a model? We have a couple of new alders, and I think just generally for the public understanding, how PEGO bond works versus other types of TIF financing?
Sure. I'll let, Keith, you want to take that one? And Robert can chime in, too?
Yeah, absolutely. So PEGO just stands for pay-as-you-go financing. So you say you're going to build something. Build it, pay the property taxes, and then you're going to generate tax increment over and above what the base value is, essentially to pay a portion of that back to a developer with essentially what's contained within the development agreement. It's performance-based. So really, when we talk about tax increment, you have two buckets of money here. You've got the property taxes that are currently being collected from the base value. We don't generate any tax increment off of that. Those property taxes still flow to the various local units of government. Your second bucket is the value created over and above that base value. That is the tax increment that's being generated. So as this assessed value increases, you're going to be generating tax increment. Generally, with a multifamily apartment like this, it could take two, three years for it to have its full assessment on the tax base. So really, it's only generating what they're paying in property taxes at the end of the day. And so you're going to be agreeing to pay a portion of that as baked in the development agreement. And with this case, it would be 67% of the tax increment generated would be paid to the developer for this municipal revenue obligation note. So it's no money exchanging hands upfront. It is fully performance-based. As tax increment comes into the city, it's paid out.
Okay, thank you.
Just to add.
Okay.
This is Robert Proctor. I'm an attorney at Axley. You probably know my partner, Troy Thompson. He does the labor and employment for the city. I was asked to help out on the developer agreement. I think some of the easier way to think of PEGO is, PEGO is usually used by municipalities because it's a safer mechanism for them. It's less risk. You would often see in a TIF, especially, this is how it used to be done more, is you would actually pay upfront a developer incentive, say, write a check for $2 million that you would borrow money to do that with. The city would borrow the money, and then the city would use the tax increment from the, from the project to pay off the city's, the money, the funds that the city borrowed. In PEGO, what happens is the developer takes, is the one who borrows the money or provides all, takes on, pays all of the costs of the project, and then pays his taxes. And after the taxes are paid, creating the increment, the city only then pays back or pays a portion, each an annual portion, as part of the annual developer incentive. So that if the increment isn't created or the taxes aren't paid, the city doesn't end up paying the, doesn't pay the tax, doesn't pay, excuse me, the TIF incentive payment. So it protects the, it protects the city to make sure that the money actually exists before it pays any incentive to the developer. So the extraordinary costs are a PEGO TIF. The payment of the workforce housing unit offset to the developer is not a PEGO TIF. It's an obligation that the city is taking on, contingent on the developer complying with the agreement to provide the workforce housing units. And the developer has to provide them, period. Not just to get the offset. They're contractually agreeing to provide them. And that payment, there's enough tax increment to make that payment, but it does not, it's not required to come from the increment created by the project. And it doesn't require that the project actually create that increment. It just requires that the project provides the workforce housing units. That's a technical matter, but as a practical matter, the project needs to be built in order for the units to be provided, and the developer has to be in compliance with the agreement to receive the offset. And since, once the project is built, it will, it has. It's a conservative estimate, and so it's extremely likely that it will produce enough increment to pay for both the TIF, PEGO TIF, and the workforce housing assistance. And it's a condition that they have to pay the taxes in order to get those. So functionally, it works like a PEGO that if the increment's not created and the taxes aren't paid, it's, the offset's not paid. So I think it's a very safe and conservative developers' agreement that protects the city and accomplishes its purposes. So I hope that helped explain it a little bit and didn't make it more confusing.
Yes, thank you, Robert. Okay, any other question? Logan?
I have a couple of different questions and then a couple of comments as well. Of course I do, right? So I guess my first question is from the workforce housing re, kind of. So I guess my first question is from the workforce housing reimbursement. We talked about the Pago for the TIF funding. How will that yearly fund be provided? Is that something we're writing a check from the Affordable Housing Fund? Or is that provided as a tax incentive? Or how does that work? That, what is it, something with $46,000, $48,000 a year in offsets for the affordable units?
That one is for Keith?
It's, I can take that. It's estimated to come from the increment generated from the tax assessments. Okay.
And just to follow up on that, the certification we have for the WEDA certification is August 31st. And then that payment would be made on October 1st.
And then just to kind of clarify for the listening public here, the original request that had come in for this TIF funding was just about 3.1, and we are about $1 million less based on the ELLER's analysis. Just yes, no? Okay, so I just want to just point that out for the public that if somebody is wondering how we came to those numbers, it wasn't, and we're not, you know, sorry, Chris, we're not giving you everything you asked for, but appreciate your partnership.
One clarification there, though, the 3.1, they are eligible extraordinary costs. It was just the ELLER's analysis showed that the gap was only the 2 million there. But they did have 3.1 million in eligible costs.
Perfect, thank you. And I guess I'll just, I really want to quickly summarize for folks what the affordable rents look like, because I hear all the time, what does affordable housing actually look like? What does that mean in dollars and cents? So reading from the materials that were in our packet here, the maximum rents for a studio at 60% area median income would still be 1363. One bedroom would be 1461, and two bedrooms 1753, compared to market rate, 1550 for studio, 1737 for one bedroom, and 2,500 for two bedroom. So just wanted to kind of provide that for folks as well as to kind of summarize what that affordability looks like. So this is not going to be something that is a significant, like a Section 42, anything like that. This is, you're still having to make at that, for a household of one person, you still have to make $54,000 and change a year. And for a family of four, your income is 77, almost $78,000. So I just wanted to kind of point out all those figures here and put some dollars behind this kind of abstract concept of what affordability looks like. And with that, I just wanted to say I appreciate, Chris, as I told you when we had chatted about this as well, it's easier for me to vote in favor of providing city, you know, the TIF funding when there's something in it that I can go back to folks in District 3 and say, here's what we got out of it. If it's market rate housing, we need that. It's also harder to sell that. If we, you know, can go and say, we brought the Rusty Bee into the neighborhood. If we brought some affordability into an area that's really heavily market rate rental, I think those are the things that people understand. Those are the trade-offs and the things that we as the city and the taxpayers get out of it. So I appreciate you willing to kind of step up and join, you know, kind of meet us in this project. And I'm excited to see it work out, and I hope it, the model that we were kind of hoping this becomes, I hope it turns into a successful model that we can replicate elsewhere.
Thank you. Donna?
Yeah, and I agree with Logan's sentiments. It's always a pleasure working with you, Chris, and glad we could reach a happy medium with those. And even though, like, even some of the workforce housing is still on the higher end, but that's not a conversation for this thing. But I do really appreciate us having some negotiations about things and bringing some of this affordability to the housing crisis that we're seeing here and throughout the rest of the nation. So thank you for that.
Gabriela?
Just want to say, we took a look at the architectural design review and plan commission last, I believe the last meeting. And it was a beautiful design, and the townhouse, there's townhouses that wrap around the street level. So it's a really, and then the parking is mostly internal to the building. So it's going to be really nice street appeal, beautiful. And then I know a townhome I'm certain is very desirable for rentals. So it'll be a good project that brings some good, and it's a beautiful building as well. So those affordable units will be getting great amenities and excited. Hopefully, we get some of the people that are working in the area, living in those apartments. That would be wonderful. Yeah, so I think we need to try everything when it comes to affordable housing. We need to be pulling all the levers that are available and trying every little bit and finding every partner we can. So appreciate, Mike, your team, working on this and innovating and continuing to find new ideas. I think that's something that we have to do. And I think it's been impressive to see what we've accomplished this year and excited that this is among the many things that have happened. Thanks.
I would just add, administration, finance, legal, Keith, Robert, it was a whole team effort, Devante, to kind of come up with the model and the language and the analysis and the template for the development agreement. So it was a real team effort to get us to this point. So thanks, everybody.
We're on your team, Mike.
Appreciate that.
I have a question for Chris. Are you planning to convert in the future these townhomes in condos?
We certainly could. And I think you know that we've done that here recently with our REVA project. We've converted nine of our townhomes to condos. They're for sale. And please come buy one, because...
Okay, any other comment? Bill?
I guess looking forward. So the affordable program is going to go for 15 years. What do you envision beyond that?
Well, you know, so that's a good question down the road, but I mean, that's our obligation. You know, I think that this is our first experience with this, and I don't know if it's going to be something that we're happy we did or regretted we did. But I think that, you know, I think we'll see where we're all at in 15 years. But if this is a formula that works for everybody, you know, there's, I think there's no reason to not see it work in this project and extension or in other projects. So I think it's just going to be a learning experience for us. And I'm real optimistic right now, but, you know, we'll see when we get into the administration.
Okay, thank you. So I want to say thank you, Chris, for working with us, you know, many, many meetings.
Yeah, many meetings, many meetings.
But I think I am happy that we are bringing this new product. It's a pilot. This is something that is part of our housing initiative that we launched this year. So I hope we can replicate this in other projects here in the city. So, okay. And I want to say thank you to Mike and your team. Okay, so all those in favor of resolution R-194-25, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, so where we are now?
Plan Commission?
Oh, Plan Commission.
I will move approval of resolution R-20425 approving certified survey map request CS 261525 by Jim Classy to create two lots out of one existing lot associated with 2160 Fitchburg Road.
Second.
This was approved by Plan Commission. There's another ordinance immediately after this for a rezone for the same project, just for context. This is, this is, and rural also, I'm sorry, I interrupted. Ag and rural approved?
Ag and rural approved, yeah.
I was going to add that in. This basically cuts out a residential property from farmland into its own lot, so that lot can be then sold. So it will still have a well that serves the home, and the well will also still serve the farm buildings. So there'll be a well agreement to make that possible. Otherwise, it's pretty straightforward, just making sure that residential property can be sold.
So can you explain, we are, you know, for the public, so we are building?
The home exists. Home exists on the lot already. We're just splitting that lot off so that it can be sold.
Okay. Okay, Bill?
Yeah, so I guess a couple of questions. It says this is called a consolidation. Why is it called a consolidation when we're doing the opposite?
We can ask Deanna.
Yeah, Deanna, can you talk about this? We also did a conditional use for a farm consolidation. But I think it's kind of a quirk of our code. Deanna?
Yeah, it's a little bit on the quirky side. But generally, what this is used is many of our farms have several parcels that are just out of the old 40s and not even actually planted at the original time. They're just the original meets and bounds surveys. So in our code, a farm consolidation is when you take all those different parcels and then put all the parcels in the farmland in one parcel. So all the farm buildings, all the farmland into one parcel, and then separate out the residential house. And there's several reasons to do that for a farm family. In this case, they want to sell off the residential house, and the Hagemans own the rest of the farm buildings and the farm, which they just use for crops. And in some cases, it just has to do with insurance and mortgages. It's easier to mortgage a house that is zoned on a one-acre lot that's zoned residential. So it's a bit of a quirk. I don't know if that totally answered your question, but that's what the farm consolidation is.
And just for context, too, that conditional use, that's part of the memo. That is something that went to Plan Commission, but it does not come to council. So we are not voting on that tonight. What's before us is the approval of the certified survey map, and then we will look at the rezone next.
Any question, comments? This is kind of like, yeah, not like an easy topic, but... Okay. All those in favor of resolution R-20425, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. The next one.
I'll move approval of ordinance 2025-029 approving rezone request RZ 261425 by Jim Classy to rezone property from AX Exclusive Agricultural to RR Rural Residential on property associated with 2160 Fitchburg Road.
Second.
Did Ag and Rural Affairs Committee approve?
Yes, they did.
And Plan?
Plan Commission approved. This again is the same project. This is, we just approved the map. This is the rezone from Exclusive Agricultural to Rural Residential.
Any question, comment? Okay, so all those in favor of ordinance 2025-0-29, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. Next one.
I'll move approval of resolution R-20525 approving Comprehensive Development Plan request CDP 261025 by Danny Affable, agent for JT Klein to amend the Orchard Point Comprehensive Development Plan to allow for a multifamily residential development on property associated with Orchard Point Lot 11.
Second.
Okay, what is this?
Plan Commission did approve.
Okay.
This is, there's one of two. This first is the Comprehensive Development Plan. Next, we will look at the rezone. This is for a project we've been talking about on Nesbit Road. It's a JT Klein project that we've been talking about as a senior affordable housing. This Comprehensive Development Plan is something that we do in the city of Fitchburg. Not all cities do it, but it's to look at a big area and create a plan for what that could look like so that we can kind of control some of the development. This is amending it. Sorry, I was looking at the wrong notes. Yeah, this is amending it to allow for this project to move forward. This was originally going to be a retail, I believe, and this is now going to be housing. And so there's been an evolution of the project. Oh, also, the developer shared that this project has evolved over time. This was originally, when we first started talking about it, it was just a single, I think it was like a single building, senior family housing. What it is now, the current site plan, which is what was moving forward, Building 1 is going to be affordable senior housing. They have a WEDA tax credit and an $8 million Dane County grant to help fund it. 80 units, 48 one-bedroom, 32 two-bedroom, and it's for 30% to 80% of area median income, senior only, 55-plus. And there will be 16 supportive units in that building. There will also be some supportive services for the people that live in that building. And there will be a second building on the lot that will be a market rate building, 100 units. And there will be an outdoor area behind Building 1, sorry, behind Building 2, the market rate building, that Building 1 will also have access to. Generally speaking, it's a high-level finishes and amenities. And city staff has approved all aspects of it. And they did work in underground parking as part of it.
Okay.
Oh, and one note, they, both buildings will have EV chargers in the parking underground. And then they did have to increase the fire suppression system in the building to accommodate. There wasn't two clear access points for the fire trucks because of the topography of the lot. So they increased the fire suppression system in the building.
Any question, comments? I don't know. Danny, do you want to add anything else or no?
No, we can answer it.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Bill?
So Building 1 is the...
Can we put that in there?
The one along Nesbit Road. Building 2 is the one that bumps up kind of to Fitzroona. And if we bring that bus stop back, that means the seniors have to walk really far to get there, right? Around the entire perimeter. And there's no direct connection. Is that just because of the geography there? Is that too steep a hill to climb or something?
There's still a pedestrian path there. There's still a pedestrian path that goes up and connects to it.
It doesn't look like it goes, it looks like the path goes around the parcel, but not into the parcel.
Yeah, that's the existing trail. We're like improving the trail from Nesbit all the way to like the midpoint between the two buildings to give fire truck access through there. And then there's a path that connects up to the top of the trail from the corner of the property and goes up.
Okay. I also saw, there's a slide in there that says, "Green building principles incorporated into the site design." The rest of the print is too small to read. It's an image rather than text. Can you talk about some of the green building principles that are being incorporated? That sounds interesting to me.
Yeah, so the senior buildings committed to the Wisconsin Home Green Built Gold Plus standards, which is essentially equivalent to like weed silver, a high weed silver or low weed gold. It's kind of built around energy efficiency and making the building insulated to a point so that there's a lot of different upgrades to fixtures, HVAC. There's a thicker insulation on the exterior of the building. There's an insulation between the underground garage and the first floor unit. So there's all sorts of different metrics of what they're trying to measure to make these buildings a little bit more airtight so you're not losing efficiencies to the elements and the climate we're in. There's also some other things as far as lighting going, that they're meeting certain thresholds. All the appliances need to meet different thresholds as well. There's all sorts of different certifications. This is the one that we picked that we have worked with. But essentially, all components of the building are going to have a higher commitment to energy efficiency. And then there's also going to be a solar array on the roof as well.
And the solar is designed to...
Seventy percent of the building's common area usage.
But are you planning to do only that to the affordable building, not to the market rate? Is that correct?
Yes, that's the case this time.
And why are you not planning to install solar in the market rate?
I guess it probably comes down to a little bit of cost. There's some WEDA points that went along with agreeing to that. So I think that kind of factored into it as well. So there's other ways that we're going to look at green efficiency. I think it was mentioned, the EV chargers throughout the building. A lot of the appliances will be the same throughout. When we buy for 80 units, we're going to buy for 180. So there's going to be overlap. It's just not going to get the actual certification.
Any other question? Yes, Bill?
I don't know if you're able to do this with modeling software or something, but do you have like a ballpark on what sort of energy savings we can expect over a code minimum building?
That's a great question. We can get back to you on that.
Yeah.
We are working with Focus on Energy, and they do a whole like modeling of the building, and it's not completed yet. It's like part of our process with the tax credit project. And I know that Kevin submitted it about a month ago, and so we're working through that process. But at some point, you know, we'll have that answer. Whereas the plans are more defined at a GDP level, it's really hard to get to that. But they've got at Westgate, we could easily figure out what we did on the, I mean, we've met this requirement at the last six or so buildings we've done. So we can easily look at the last one that we have and get you that answer. The envelope should have changed that, so.
Okay, thank you.
I served on the Agent Well Committee, and I was, and we've been talking a lot about kind of like senior housing and transportation. And I'm just curious, have any of the... about kind of like senior housing and transportation. And I'm just curious, have any of the, I guess, input from senior, current seniors been like used in constructing your, your new building or in the plans or designs? Or incorporation of like maybe the senior center director at all?
Yeah, at this point, I mean, we're still at the GIP level, but each of our buildings evolves kind of based off of what's working at our previous senior buildings. A good example is our Middleton Building. We had a salon that didn't work out. We couldn't find somebody to staff it, and then we ended up turning it into an arts and crafts room. It's been the most popular room in our building. So now, looking into the amenity package, we're going to try and provide kind of a space like that. One of our buildings, we had kind of a library area that worked out really well. So we built that into our Westgate Building. We'll probably incorporate a space like that here as well. So it's kind of one of those things. We do talk to the property managers and make sure that we find out what's working. Compared to Limestone, which is our workforce building just up the street, this will have a little bit larger community meeting area, bigger emphasis on kind of seating and arrangements where seniors will probably spend a little bit more time than kind of our workforce buildings.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I want to mention that Mike and I, we had the opportunity to tour one of the buildings in Madison. And, you know, it, it was very nice done, you know, and yeah. So I like the library, the little library.
Yeah, yeah. It's a, it's a big hit. It's a popular amenity.
Bill?
Did, did you guys happen to go to FIASCon? It was in Milwaukee this year, so it would have been really easy to get there.
To what?
Passive House Convention Annual Event.
No, I think that, that'd be something our architect would be, you know, probably, probably did, but that's, no, we didn't, we didn't have.
The other thing that we discussed, when we, I don't remember, Danny, when we did the tour of one of our meetings is, you know, how we can, for the seniors, because we don't have public transportation to bring the people to the seniors. So something that we can, how we can make it happen, or, you know, how we can, you guys can work on that. So they can, how we can transport to the seniors, to the senior center if they want to do some activity, you know, so.
We're going to work with the senior director, and we'll encourage them to do that because we know you guys have a great senior center. But I mean, we're, this is 55 older active housing. This isn't assisted living or memory, memory care. Like, our seniors are still driving, you know. So it's, for the most part, I mean, we do have obviously people that, you know, get, get older in these, in these buildings. But, you know, I think for, there's enough people driving there that if we, you know, coordinate events, if there's events and stuff like that, our manager works with the senior centers in the different cities that we have these in and, you know, puts together events and stuff like that. So, you know, we, we'll make sure we get there. But at, with an eighty unit, I don't think we can really support a bus. I mean,
Okay. So, oh, I forgot what I was planning to say.
This is walkable to the bus station. It's just a little farther down the road. And I know there's some topography, but I mean, there are a lot of seniors that can very much walk to that bus station. And then it's also will be eligible for paratransit. So anybody that is unable to make it to the bus station may be eligible for paratransit.
Can you also mention about the, the company's going to manage the building?
Yeah, absolutely. We use Oprah Corporation to manage all of our buildings. They're a local management company. They're one of the largest management companies in the state, and they also specialize in affordable housing. I think previously mentioned, there's a lot of compliance that goes into this. They do a great job from that end, but they also do a really good job of keeping the buildings maintained. And a big component of these senior buildings, like Jacob mentioned, is event planning and just really catering to the right tenant base here. There's, for our senior buildings, there's events happening every day. There's coffee and donuts usually once a week. So they do a good job keeping our tenants engaged and coordinating some things from that side of things, along with great maintenance of our projects as well.
Any other question, comment? Okay, here none. All those in favor of resolution R dash two zero five dash twenty five, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. Next one.
I'll move approval of ordinance 2025 oh 27 approving rezone request RZ 26 oh nine twenty five by Danny Affable, agent for JT Klein to rezone property from BG General Business to PDDGIP Plan Development District General Implementation Plan to allow for proposed multifamily residential development on property associated with Orchard Point Lot 11.
Second.
Plan Commission did approve this, and this is the rezone for the project we have just been discussing. I think we pretty much covered all the different aspects of it.
Okay, any additional questions, comments? Okay, here none. All those in favor of ordinance 2025 dash oh dash twenty seven, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. Okay, congratulations. Thank you. Next one.
I'll move approval of resolution R 20625 approving comprehensive development plan request CDP 261625 by Chris Dawson, agent for Fitchburg Partners LLC to amend the Jamestown Quarry Comprehensive Development Plan to allow for a commercial and residential development on property located off Fitchrona Road.
Thank you. What is this, Gabriela?
I'll second that.
Oh.
Thank you. Plan Commission did approve. These are, there are two separate ones, and I'm going to cover them separately because they are different. The CDP is the, what we're looking at here. This is the comprehensive development plan update. This is relatively simple. This is just bringing it back for reapproval. It changes the timelines for the project, the ownership, reflecting the ownership changes, and also includes now the ADRs, the Architectural Design Reviews, for the four lots that front McKee Road that have been approved. That is really the only change. I will cover the rezone next.
Yeah, that's it. This is kind of like admin thing.
Yeah, this is mostly administrative in nature.
So we have also Chris Dawson on line if we have any questions. Okay, so any question about this?
I had one question. There was a note in there that said, multi-use path proposed along the north and west sides of Fitchrona Road. Or, I'm sorry, the path requirement is removed. And is that because there is already supposed to be a path on the other side of the road?
I don't remember.
Deanna, I don't think we covered that. Deanna?
Yep. I can take that one. So the, the design and the planning has gone forward significantly since we did the original CDP. And instead of the path going around the outside of, or the perimeter of the property, now that multi-use path is on the north and west side of Fitchrona Road. So essentially, that condition just isn't applicable anymore.
Okay.
Okay, any other question? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R dash two oh six dash twenty five, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. Next one.
I'll move approval of ordinance 2025 oh 28 approving rezone request RZ 261725 by Chris Dawson, agent for Fitchburg Partners LLC to amend the PDD SIP Plan Development District Specific Implementation Plan for property located off Fitchrona Road.
Second.
So this is a amendment to the PDD SIP. This is specifically to do with the fast food restaurants with freestanding signs. The staff opted to handle this through a rezone rather than through a variance. It basically accommodates the signage so that, because they have two drive-through lanes. So now they can have a freestanding menu sign at each of the drive-through lanes and a monument sign that says what their business is. This, it's a little bit of a cleanup because we already approved this design with two lanes. But then one of the Plan Commissioners noted that technically by our ordinance, we only allow one freestanding sign. So we had to update it to make that actually possible by our ordinances. So this is what, why that is there.
So do you understand what we're doing? Okay.
Allowing a drive-through?
Allowing two signs, two menu signs.
Two, two menu signs.
Yeah. And I guess it also will allow, sorry, a, a sign at the corner.
That electronic one, isn't it?
I, I don't know. I think so.
Yeah.
I think they're all electronic nowadays. But there's also going to be a monument sign at that corner that will say all of the different things that are on the, in the development.
Dave?
Well, I like Deanna in the plan for coming up a reasonable solution. A number of years ago, you know, there was a large grocery store that wanted to go in there. And one of the things that kind of torpedoed it was the sign. You know, they can only have a little sign, and they, no, we want a big sign. It wasn't the only reason. So thank you for your accommodation for, to make these businesses viable.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments, question? Bill?
I guess unrelated to the signage, but in the documentation in the packet, it calls for an eight-foot, a minimum eight-foot wide path along McKee east of Fitchrona Road. And the previous resolution 20625 documents a five-foot sidewalk on the west side of Fitchrona Road. Why, why do we have two different types of, of pathway at that intersection?
That's an oversight on my end. McKee is just going to have a five-foot path. So that was an oversight on my, my end.
So east of Fitchrona Road as well?
The path on east of Fitchrona Road on the infill is not going to go in right now. I'm not sure if that is going to end up to be an eight-foot path or the five-foot sidewalk. I do know, that's something I'll have to check on, but the, the five-foot walkway on, to the west of Fitchrona Road, on McKee, that will be a five-foot sidewalk.
Yeah, I guess. So my question was, why would we have an eight-foot multi-use path dumping into a five-foot wide sidewalk?
Yeah, that does not make any sense. Yeah. So that's probably something that's an oversight on my end.
I could maybe help address that if, if that's all right?
Yes, go.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. So I think the, the intent of Public Works with that comment was that there's an eight-foot wide sidewalk or multi-use path that would be in, along the McKee Road frontage that is part of the infill, which is the Wingra batch plant right now. I do think that they intend to maintain that requirement, however, it is not covered by this SIP. So it is a condition that, that Public Works would like to implement in the future, is my understanding. However, it just was included in air, I think as Deanna mentioned, she had added this one in on accident for, for this particular rezoning. As far as how that would connect in the future, we have a 10-foot wide path that will run along the west and north side of Fitchrona Road. So that future eight-foot wide path along McKee will kind of tee into that path itself. And the intended multi-use network would continue along Fitchrona.
Any question? I don't, I don't follow. I need to see, visualize it, but yeah.
Okay, we're good. I can go really quick, just while Chad's pulling that up. I was looking at Google Earth here as well. And I understand all their jets, or I believe I understand your concerns with the path on McKee. Looking at it though, it looks like once you get to the city of Madison, which is the bound, western boundary of this property, there is no path or sidewalk or anything. So
At this time, correct.
And I don't know what their appetite is for that. It looks like they'd have to rip up a lot of trees to get down that hill. So I guess I would be, I'm less concerned about it past Fitchrona. If, I, I think the better option, if we could twist Madison's arm and tell them what to do, would be to have a path on the south side of the street anyway. So I guess as long as there's service to the bus stop, whether it's five feet or eight feet, doesn't make too much difference to me.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of ordinance 2025 dash oh dash twenty eight, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries.
And I have a report for the rest of the Plan Commission. So just for, we cannot discuss this, but just for awareness, we did pass two minor comp plan amendments at Plan Commission. The first was to create a new medium-high density land use category. That's going to sound like a reprise, which is, because it is. We have to agree, council and Plan Commission has to agree. Plan Commission did amend it to make it nine to fifteen units per anchor, which is what the discussion was last time. So we will have, we will discuss that next, in December ninth at council. We also passed another minor comp plan amendment, again, to come back to council on December ninth, also in regards to Jamestown Quarry, which we were just discussing, to change the part that, that would be residential at the back of that lot from medium-high density, medium-density residential to high-density residential. That did pass. And we also had several other things on the agenda. The first was a, a Rosen Control Stormwater Management Permit from, for Thermo Fisher for land disturbing activity on Spoke Drive. This is the, the lot, the long lot that is next to the bike path off of McKee Road. It basically is on the other side of the bike path from where the YW, why the YMCA is going in on McKee and Spoke. They want to use that land to put basically dirt from construction projects. It like, they fill it up with dirt, and then they, they restore it with a native prairie. That's what they want to do with that. That will require trees coming down. They brought it the, at the September meeting, but we rejected it because there was a lot of concern from the neighbors that lived by about how close they were going to be to their apartments. Yes, and then the trees. So it, they came back a month later. They did, they changed the buffer from the homes from 50 feet to 100 feet. They changed the operating hours. So it'll be 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM Monday through Friday. And then they did a tree survey to take a look at where the quality trees are. And they will preserve many of the trees in that 50, 100-foot buffer, but not all of them. But they plan to replace the trees that they take down, and they will restore that final to native prairie land in the end. It's actually similar to what they did on the other side. They did this, the same thing on the other side. They're just continuing it. And, but yes, that was approved with those changes. We did an ADR on a storage building that's coming, that Tri-North is adding. We did a ADR on Thermo Fisher. They're, they're doing some changes to create a loading dock. We did an early issuance of permits for the Lido Apartments, the ones we were just talking about tonight. They, so they won't have completely finished all of the public improvements before they get started. This is pretty typical for, for developments these days, to be honest. And then the rest we will, rest of the resolutions we looked at, we will look at tonight later. And then last thing, the department report. They are working on cleaning up the neighborhood plans after our vote. So that is underway. And then once that is complete, I guess they're currently working on it, they will be doing an RFP for a comprehensive plan update. So that's the next big project on the horizon for Planning Department. Thanks.
Thank, I want to make a comment about the, the area they are, they are doing the infill, you know, with the dirt. Because my understanding was that Thermo Fisher is not planning to do anything in that parcel. And I don't know why they are, you know, removing a lot of tree and putting this, if they are not going to do anything. So I was very concerned when they came in September, because the amount of tree they are going to remove, how it's going to affect the neighbors or the pines there. And I know that they are making money bringing dirt there. So this is why they're doing this. But I don't know if they are planning not to do anything there, why we are disrupting this parcel so much. So that one, I want to make the comment because I don't, you know, I wasn't in Plan Commission to, to approve that. I will vote no to that, but I want to make a public comment.
For context on that, the, it will be dirt, like, I don't want to say clean dirt. That's a weird thing to say. But it's like, it's not like, like build, old buildings that's like all crumbled down. It's, it's dirt, and it's typically things that are made in construction projects. The idea behind having it in a place like that, I'm just repeating what the developer said. So like, the reason for having it in a place like this is that there are tons of construction projects, and they just truck the dirt to here rather than trucking it way out far away, you know, a little bit more, less impact in terms of the transit for those types of things. That is the justification for it.
Deanna. Okay, thank you. Yes.
Yeah, I had questions on that as well. So, I mean, having a fill site within our urban service area seems a little weird to me if we're not going to do any, I mean, that just seems like an odd use for something that could be serviced, you know. So long term, you said it's going to be restored to native prairie. Is this going to be like parkland? Or is this just going to be prairie that, again, so it's, it's just going to be land within our urban service area that we'll never have anything productive done with it?
It's private property, and it is a long, my understanding is a long lot that like borders the bike trail.
Both sides, yeah.
So on both sides. So I guess the idea is, I, I don't think they, my understanding is they don't have interest in developing it. interest in developing it, maybe perhaps because it's such a long, unusual lot. So aside from, obviously they're, they're developing the YMCA on that other side, but the, the lot behind the YMCA is very similar in nature to this. So, I don't know, I guess that's, they just want to do something with that property and, but they don't plan on developing it, so this is their way to make some money off of the land.
Neighbors don't want, neighbors don't want anything there. We, we looked at that plot when we were evaluating fire station locations, because we thought we could probably get that for very little, very little money, but it was impractical access in and out of there at the time. But neighbor, neighbors do not want businesses in there. I think it's, I don't know, I think it's too narrow, you know, with the streets and the bike trail, I, I don't, I don't view it as feasible for commercial or any endeavor like that.
Okay, okay. That's it, Gabriela?
That's it.
Thank you. So next we move to the Board of Public Works.
I'll move approval of Resolution R.145, rejection of the well number 12, well facility bids.
Second.
Board of Public Works rejected this.
Approved the rejection.
Approved, approved the rejection, yes.
Finance also approved the rejection.
Okay.
So we are, we are putting in restrooms in the, in the well as part of, kind of related to the, the new park there, and when it was originally, I only missed this, that they put an open-air shelter on it. We don't need an open-air shelter, we have a park down there, and so our, our bids came in high, we reevaluated that, and, and we're going to rebid with the redesigned thing without the open-air shelter on it. Hopefully bring our, bring our costs down.
Okay, any question, comments? All those, all those in favor of Resolution R.140-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries, next one.
I'll move approval of Resolution R.159-25, final assessment resolution for 2024 sidewalk replacement.
Second.
Board of Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
We were not able to complete this, get the work completed last year, so we had to come back and, and finish it this year, and it has been, it has been completed, and within, within the 10%, 10% cost, I think we came very close to the end year's estimate, so we were able to issue the final assessment resolution.
So the final assessment are going to be sent this year for the 2024 replacement, something like that?
You are, you are correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Any question, comments? Okay. All those in favor of Resolution R.159-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries, next one.
Move approval of Resolution R.182-25, approving Amendment 1 for well number 12 and Tower D Engineering Services.
Second.
Board of Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Again, they need a engineering change for the design change on the, on the building, removing the, the open air, so that we can get to approve a revised design, that we can get it back out to bid.
And also we are doing a time extension for Tower D, isn't it true?
You are, you are correct, Madam Mayor. Thank you, thank you.
Any other question, comment? None? Okay. All those in favor of Resolution R.182-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries, next one.
Next, move approval of Resolution R.183-25, authorizing purchase of plow truck equipment for the fourth chassis.
Second.
Board of Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
So we are, we are authorizing the purchase. I would tell you, we won't be able to get this anytime soon, but we are, are getting it, getting it put on the books. The company will, they'll store the truck there for us, so we don't have to, we don't have to accept it.
Oh, yeah.
Still maintains warranty, so that's part of the reason we're, we're doing this.
Okay. Any question, comments? Here none? All those in favor of Resolution R.183-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries, next one.
Move approval of Resolution R.189-25, conditionally approving a holding tank on 2309 Tulare Street.
Second.
Board of Public Works approved.
Okay. What is this?
So there's, their, their system, their septic system has failed. They're not, through the topography and things on the, on their property, they do not, they're not able to put in a mound system. So this is the only, only way for the, a holding tank is the only way for the residents to continue to have occupancy.
And this location is in Greenfield neighborhood, and one of my concern is that there is soil issues, you know what I mean? The saturation and everything that maybe we are going to start seeing this, when they had to replace the septic, this one is going to be some common theme, you know, holding tanks, yeah.
Board shares your view. You know, Board of Public Works shares that.
Yeah.
Shares that view, you know, it's, once it starts, they're, they're built at the same time, you know, I, I think it's wetter than when it was built, they, you reach, you know, septic systems only last so long. And so I, I, I think we may see, may see more, and we may need a more permanent solution for the area.
Yeah, we know the permanent solution, is the sewer installation.
They don't want to pay for it, though.
But they want to pay for this, I imagine that, that, no, my, my, I imagine that a holding tank costs what, between $6,000 and $10,000?
Yeah.
And then you have to maintain, you know, often compared to the septic.
Needs to be emptied every few weeks, yeah. Yeah.
So, okay. Any question, comment? Nope? Okay. All those in favor of Resolution R.189-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries, next one.
Approval Resolution R.190-25, approving subdivision, approving agreement for subdivision improvements in the Gusto Development Survey, Certified Survey Map.
Second.
Board of Public Works approved.
Plan Commission approved.
Okay.
This is, this is the lot kind of on the, the south end of the triangle between the bike trail, Lacy Road, and Seminole Highway. So this is the first sub-agreement for the first part of this, this development where, where apartment buildings are planned to be built.
Okay. Any question, comments?
I would ju, I would just add, you know, this development, you probably all hear griping about it, but I would tell you, city does not have to extend sewer, water, you know, everything is there, there's no streets we have to put in, so when, when people complain to you about it, make sure you make those, make those points.
Okay. All those in favor of Resolution R.190-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries, next one.
I'll move approval of Resolution R.192-25, accepting a public traffic signal easement in Outlet 3 of Jamestown Quarry.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Plan Commission approved.
It's just a box, a signal box that will be going in that lot for controlling the lights, and so we're getting easement for that.
Any question, comments? Pretty easy, no? All those in favor of Resolution R.182-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So we are done with Public Works, and now we move to Park Commission.
No report, we meet next, next week on Thursday.
Okay, thank you. Library Board.
I have a couple of updates from our last meeting on October 15th. We will, should expect at the Council level, a budget amendment to come through, probably within the next couple of weeks, within one of our next upcoming Council meetings because of utility overages. I think we've talked about that, I've brought that forward in past Library Board updates, so there'll be more information to come on that. The RFP for the children's library redesign has been put out, should be open through the end of this week, and then bid opening will be after that. That's for the kind of big capital project for the library for 2026. And then just to kind of follow up on another topic we've brought here before, currently, or I guess as of at least the 15th, about a third of the solar array at the library is not functional. There, we got new inverters, and then one of the new inverters already died and has been replaced and still isn't working. There were some other challenges along the lines, I want to say that the company that originally installed them has no longer been allowed to do business in the United States. So I think that's contributing factor to some of the issues we've had in repairing that equipment, which certainly doesn't help the utility overage situation I just mentioned.
But I saw that we fixed those in.
It sounds like the fixes have not kept.
Yeah, and this particular inverter was one of the Huawei inverters. Huawei is the international company that is no longer doing business in the United States. When that inverter was replaced with a new inverter, the company that did that installation, I think they call it an arc fault issue, that they still will need to come back and diagnose and repair in order to allow the new inverter to properly generate electricity.
So how many of those inverters are not working now? What is the percentage? You say?
I think it's just that one area that's served by the inverter, but I'm not entirely positive.
The, the number that Wendy gave was that about a third of the solar array is not working.
A third?
Yes.
What is equal to what?
Yeah, I don't know how many inverters serve that, that particular array. I'm only aware of one inverter that has a problem on that building.
And from what I understand, the issue could be as simple as one cable needs to be reconnected. I think of it kind of like the, the lights at the holidays, where if one bulb burns out, they all burn out, and then you have to jiggle each light bulb to fix it. It could be that simple, but that also is time-consuming to go through and unplug and replug every connection from Panel 1 to Panel 2 to Panel 3, et cetera, et cetera.
So what is the plan?
That is a great question.
So the plan is, is that currently the library does not have funds to address this matter, and they are likely going to have to wait until 2026, when their new budget year kicks in to have it addressed.
Really?
Yes, that's correct.
So how much money we are talking?
We don't know, because they haven't been able to diagnose what the problem is yet.
Wow, this is, this is concerning, because we have, you know, I thought that, that we already fixed it, that everything was working fine. So when you said 2026 budget, so we, we need to wait until January to find the money, or, or we need to wait the 27 budget to find the money?
2026, they'll have a new budget year kick in, so if they are able to.
Oh, they are going to use some of the maintenance that they have for the library?
That would be the intent, yeah.
Okay. Do we need to hire someone, an expert to check on this, or can our people check on this, you know what I mean? I don't know.
We don't have any staff that's capable of working on a solar array, that is obviously rather specialized work. So we are working with the company that installed that solar array back in, was that 2017, I think, is when we originally installed that equipment, and, yeah.
Okay.
Just to kind of put a bow on that, I just want to also flag that as part of some of the budget challenges, when we look at 26, one of the ways that the budget was able to balance was by cutting some of the funding for external vendors that come in and help with some maintenance that is not done by city staff. So that part of the budget was cut, proposed to be cut.
What did I cut? That I don't know?
That was in Wendy's proposal.
So I'm gonna, Misty, if you're on, I'll have you explain how the funding and budgetary works for the library. I have an idea and a concept that I can offer, but I also have a resident expert at my disposal, so I'm going to ensure that you get the best information possible.
Okay.
So the library has very unique statutorily available financial powers. So the Council's ability is just to decide how much property tax money is provided to the library, but the Library Board has full discretion on how that amount of money is spent and allocated. And so when we set that property tax amount at the Council level, we base it off of net new construction, so ultimately our levy limits are passed on to the library as the same. But then once that money is provided, it's the Library Board that has, has full discretion on how they spend it.
Okay, so I didn't cut anything.
Correct, that's an accurate statement. You did not cut anything. Thank you, Misty, for that explanation.
Okay. So it was a decision by the board?
Yeah.
The Library Board, okay, okay.
Question, Logan. So I'm, I'm looking at the, the solar panel page on the Pittsburgh website, and all it says is that Pittsburgh installed 361.6 kilowatts of solar, of solar PV on the roofs of the library, City Hall, and Public Works facility, and West Fire Station in late 2017. Do you know what the size of the array is on the library specifically?
I don't, no.
Chad knows off the top of his head.
It covers a portion of the roof, that's what I can tell you.
Okay, so, anything else, and for the library?
I think I've been a downer enough from the Library Board.
Okay, so we move to the Commission of Agent Well.
Just a few things. So the, the committee is still continuing its outreach efforts throughout the, the city of Pittsburgh. And then just one event that is coming up. So they do have a luncheon tour that is happening on November 7th, 11:00 AM to 1P, around 11:00 AM to approximately 1:00 PM over at the senior center. Transportation is available for, from the Novation Commons, and then also the Lymerick, if reserved by November 4th. And to reserve a ride, you can reserve by calling area code 608-270-4290. And again, that ride needs to be reserved by November 4th. The event is on November 7, and you can reserve a ride by calling 608-270-4290. That concludes my remarks for Agent Will.
Thank you. Resource Conservation Commission?
We meet next on November 10th.
Thank you. Transportation and Transit Commission?
Yes, we meet next on November 13th.
Okay. Community and Economic Development Authority? We don't have anyone. No? I don't, yeah, I think it's next. Yeah, okay. I think it's the third week of November, I don't know. Oh, which? Or maybe the Council, I don't know.
Meetings are fourth Thursday of every month.
Four, okay.
So probably this Thursday at 7:00 AM, unless it's been canceled. It's actually not agendaed, so I'm guessing it's not happening because of the business luncheon.
Okay, okay. So next we move to Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee.
I'll move approval of Resolution R.187-25, Farmland Preservation Plan Map Amendment.
Second.
Okay. The Ag and Rural Affairs Committee is approved?
They did.
Plan?
Plan approved.
Okay, what is this?
This is an update to our farmland preservation map, in which our, the map on here, everything in green has to be agriculture-exclusive, and then we submit that map for certification. And so we've had to make some updates to the map, because there's been some changes on our end, and so then we have to make sure the map reflects what's in there. And then there's also some, I'm going to let Deanna or Brad or someone talk to the medium, long-term change, if you want to.
Okay.
Or tell me, if I made any mistakes in that, please correct them, too.
Nope, you're right. So the city of Pittsburgh participates in the, the State of Wisconsin Farmland Preservation Program. Dane County is the official entity that creates eligibility for communities for that program. They maintain a farmland preservation plan and a farmland preservation area map. We work with the county for the Pittsburgh portion of that to ensure our farmers would be eligible for that program. And anywhere in, anywhere that is in a farmland preservation area and has identified on the county map, and within an AX exclusive agriculture zone, would be potentially eligible for farmland preservation tax credit. So that's the background here. So what we're proposing here is updating the map that was in our 2014 plan for a few reasons, as, as Mike mentioned, it, we, we've had updates, and we're, we're, we're at the point where we need to recertify our exclusive agriculture zoning district with the state, and so we have to do some cleanup to make sure our AX zone and the farmland preservation areas are consistent. There is a couple other reasons that we're proposing this amendment. One of them is Pittsburgh's unique approach to law. One of them is Pittsburgh's unique approach to long-range planning through the future urban development areas. These areas, when a neighborhood plan is completed, these areas have a future land use in the comprehensive plan, future land use map, that is not agriculture. And that normally would create an eligibility issue. You know, it wouldn't necessarily meet the state or the county requirements for agricultural preservation if the future land use is something other than agriculture. So we've been working with the state and the county to come up with a solution that doesn't, you know, our long-range planning framework partially is to help preserve agriculture by concentrating growth in certain areas. So we've been working with the state and the county to come up with a solution that allows us to still do that long-range planning and develop, you know, neighborhood plans with future land uses other than agriculture while still showing that in the medium term, those areas are planned for agricultural preservation. So that's, when you look at the green, at the map with the green, that is essentially what the medium and the long-term areas are differentiated by. The medium-term areas are areas within a FUDAs. And for, you know, just for example, in Greenfield, there were a few parcels that were, that were brought out because they had, they already are not zoned AX. But the, the light green are medium-term. It's expected that they would be agriculture for 20-plus years. And while, and outside of the FUDAs is the dark green, and those are expected to be long-term agricultural preservation areas, 30-plus years. So this, this map allows us to show the county and the state that even though we have future land use other than ag, these areas are still planned for medium-term agricultural preservation. Included, also included in the packet is a map showing which parcels were proposed, are, are being removed from the agricultural preservation plan area. If this is approved, it goes to Dane County, and they incorporate it. They do annual updates to the farmland preservation map to ensure it's consistent and, and up to date. So if this is approved, this is what we would send to Dane County to incorporate into their farmland preservation plan and maintain eligibility for our farmers.
I have a question. The orange parcels, what, what are those?
Those are the parcels that we remove from the farmland preservation areas.
Oh. Okay. And what are the criteria to remove parcel?
Yeah, so the criteria to remove the parcels was, we removed any parcels that were not zoned AX and did not have agricultural future land use. We removed AX zone parcels that are expected to develop within the next 20 years. So just an example there. We are, had already removed the Oregon School District parcel in the southeast corner of the city. We also now removed the city of Verona, or the Verona School District parcel off of Lacy Road. So that's a couple of criteria. And then we removed parcels that are in agricultural use but in our non, but are in a non-certified zoning district. So anything that's in small lot agriculture. And then we, I think those, yeah, those were the criteria for removal.
So can I ask you a question? So the farm consolidation we did earlier tonight, so for example, that, when that goes through, then the farm would remain AX, whereas the house that gets partitioned off would get removed from this map going forward?
Correct, yeah.
And what is the white? What are the white parcel are? Those one are what?
Those are just not in the.
No, okay.
Yeah, they're just parcels.
And how difficult, suppose in the future we need to remove, I want, a parcel, you know, that is in green because, you know, to develop. How difficult is that to remove for the, you know, from this map? From the farmland preservation plan?
Yeah, it, it's, Dane County does annual updates, so if something comes up where, you know, the parcel is expected to develop or, or, you know, plans change, we would just submit that to, to Dane County in their annual, annual map update to remove it from the preservation area.
So this is like a process one time a year that we, we can do this? Or we can submit application?
Well, I mean, we don't have to remove the parcel before it's developed. You know, it, it is, I guess, having it in here creates the expectation that it won't be developed soon. But if something were to change, if, if it were to be rezoned or something, we can just submit that when the annual update comes up that it needs to be removed from the, from the farmland preservation areas.
Interesting. Okay, any questions? Yes, Logan?
I just had one quick question about the, the State Department of Corrections Land that's along Highway 14. I'm curious why that's listed as long-term farmland preservation when it's that institutional use of the Juvenile Correctional Facility that currently exists, and then the one that's proposed for the future too.
Yeah, that's a good question. It is zoned AX. And I guess that's, that's the main, it is zoned AX, and in the 2014 plan, it was, it was agricultural, it was identified as agricultural preservation area. And a lot of it is still farmed, even though it's owned by the Department of Corrections. So that, that was our reasoning for keeping it in. It is a little bit of a strange situation because it is partially institutional use. But I, I do believe that they also do small-scale agriculture as part of the, as part of the Correctional Institute there, so.
There are, there are other requirements to get the tax credits too, aside from just that. So, I mean, they would have to submit for the other, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Bill?
So tell me about, it looks like the solar fields that we have are, must still be AX and qualify for this credit?
I don't know if they qualify for the credit, but they are AX. So if they meet, they are AX, they're, they are in a farmland preservation area. So if, if they meet the other state criteria, they, they could qualify. But I don't believe solar, I, I don't believe they meet the state requirements when they're, when they are solar fields. I think they, I think they do have some cropping or farming income requirements in order to actually claim the tax credits with the state.
Okay. Any other question? We are learning something new today. Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R. 18725, say aye.
Aye.
And your post, the motion carried. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Okay, next we move to Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission. Who is there?
Joe is there.
Okay, no report. EMS? No report.
I guess we came.
Oh, we can, yeah.
Yeah, me and Bill and the mayor attended. And Dave. This whole row of people attended the EMS annual meeting. And it was, it was really interesting. I learned a ton, and I've been to some of those presentations before, but the chief did a really detailed explanation about all things EMS department, and then the two, I don't know what their titles are, they deputy?
Yeah, deputy chief.
Deputy chiefs? They talked about their two roles in terms of training and other preparations of the departments. So if you didn't get a chance to watch it, if you weren't there, I would highly recommend watching the video because it was very informative.
Yes. Oh, yeah. Thank you, Gabriela, for the update. Healthy Neighborhood Committee?
No update.
Housing Advisory Committee?
Just wanted to, just wanted to remind again, once again, about the Funders Forum on Housing and Smart Growth. That's going to be inviting all people in housing, in the housing sector for a roundtable discussion on the need for down payment assistance to help first-time and moderate-income homebuyers achieve homeownership in Pittsburgh. So there's going to be a panelist and speakers and time for discussion that is going to be at the Pittsburgh Library on Thursday, November 13, from 1:30 to 3:00 PM. Again, that's Thursday, and we're asking for RCPs by November 1st. That's all.
What do I, ah, okay, okay, sorry.
We had no meetings, so that's, just wanted to remind that.
Thank you. Landmark Preservation Commission?
Just very briefly, I, in my last update, I believe it was, had mentioned that I met with the, with the Chair of the Commission to kind of talk about some future agenda items. So I've passed those along to Deanna, and further updates to come.
Okay, thank you. Trade Advisory Committee?
We don't meet till December 4.
Okay. Community Equity Committee? Well, no report.
I was gonna say, no, no update other than to welcome the new mayor-appointed member, Colleen Butler.
You will need to organize a meeting because.
I've got this.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt. But now that the final member has been appointed, we are anticipating a meeting will be scheduled after the November 11th Common Council meeting.
Okay, okay.
I think that.
The bike come.
Yeah, exactly.
The pedestrian plan is gonna come to you.
Okay. That was, so I think RHR Director has sent out a request to the members to identify a date to meet.
Yep, all right.
Okay, thank, okay. Okay, we don't have any other reports from other commission and committees, so we move to.
Mayor, would you like to hear about the MPO Policy Board updates here?
Oh, yeah, I want to, because Bill is part of the board, and I ask Bill to share what he's doing in the board.
Yeah. So I believe I gave an update on our August meeting back in September. We didn't give an update on the September meeting, so I'll do that now, and I'll note that we did not have an October meeting, for lack of agenda. At our September meeting, we passed a Week Without Driving Resolution. We went over the Transportation Systems Management and Operations Plan. That's the TSMO Plan.
Okay.
Remember that for later. So the MPO is contracting with an outside vendor who is partnering with Tool Design and UW Madison. They are inventorying all existing traffic-related assets and gonna come up with a plan for improving those transportation facilities, including, you know, upgrading to more intelligent traffic signals. We talked about our preliminary award of Section 5310 program funding for 2026. 5310 is elderly and disabled transportation funding. We had a resolution creating a project funding work group. So on projects that include federal funding but are paid for by a state and local split, the state gets to use the federal funds, but the locality does not. And so that was the genesis for, for this, this work group. So there'll be, I believe, six meetings, and they're gonna be discussing that with the Wisconsin DOT and the MPO. We had a big one, a resolution approving $3.67 billion with a B dollar highway expansion for I-3990 between Madison and the Wisconsin Dells. That's 67 miles of highway. 57 interchanges will see maintenance. There's a possibility that there'll, excuse me, that there'll be two new interchanges, and construction will run from roughly 2030 to 2045. So there'll be four general-purpose travel lanes in each direction between the Belt Line and Exit 108, where I-39 and I-90 diverge. And I didn't need a glass of water until I started speaking. Isn't that interesting? And there will be sections of, of the highway that will be 12 lanes wide between the general-purpose lanes and the auxiliary lanes and the collector-distributor lanes. And then the, if you don't know, the auxiliary lanes, those are like the additional lanes along the right-hand side in case there's an, an entryway point, and then like an immediate exit within half a mile or a mile. So they don't want everybody to merge in, just to merge back out. Collector-distributor lanes, those are barrier-separated. So like a good example of that would be, if you're heading south on Verona Road and you want to exit on PD, you have to get into that special lane a full mile ahead of time. That could be because of that barrier there. We had a presentation on the 2023-2024 Traffic Safety Snapshot. This is based on the community maps, which is a collection of police reports on all of the crash incidents that occur in the state. And I believe the, the similar presentation was done for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission as well. Not by the MPO, but I think Phil may have done that. We reviewed and approved the Greater Madison MPO 2026 Unified Planning Work Program. That's the UPWP. The MPO is all about its acronyms. We have a 2.1% increase in budget, which does not keep pace with inflation. Key items within that work program include the TSMO Plan, which I mentioned earlier and told you to remember. An update to the Regional Transportation Plan, an Active Transportation Plan, and Safe Streets for All Grant was also mentioned. At the time, she said it was in a pretty good place at the moment, but then maybe not. I'm not sure where that stands right now. The federal government kind of put additional restrictions or requirements on what we're allowed to do with that grant, which makes it difficult for municipalities or, or grantee recipients in general to, to sign off on that. So that's the September meeting. Our November meeting is actually postponed by one day. It's normally the first Wednesday of the month. It'll be the, it'll be Thursday, the 6th, 6:30 to 8:00 PM. And that change is due to the fact that, I think, three of our members are on the Madison Transportation Commission, and they're meeting at the same time. But we will discuss, of particular interest to Pittsburgh, Irish Lane is one of five Surface Transportation Block Grant projects we're gonna be considering. And our Traceway and Leopold Multi-Use Path is one of 12 block grant, or, I'm sorry, Surface Transportation Block Grant TAP projects that we'll be considering. And then the big one for the November meeting is gonna be 18151, which they're planning an expansion between PD and County Highway G in Verona, and then from County Highway G west to Dodgeville, a freeway conversion, which would basically mean nobody's driveway would directly exit onto the highway anymore.
Okay.
Did you?
Thanks.
Yeah, go ahead. Are you done? I'm done with the, with the MPO stuff, meetings, yeah.
I just have one other thing. I met with Senator Radcliffe and Assemblyman Udell today, and the discussion was about if there's any appetite to change the state law on our parkland dedication fees that a city could possibly use a percentage for future equipment replacement instead of new. And so they are, they are looking into that with the League of Municipalities and basically see if it's legal. So just wanted to give you an update on, on that.
Okay.
That was Valerie suggested I, I do that.
That one is something that Bill asked me yesterday about that.
Yeah. So Alder Reigstad and Phil Groupie and Ross Kahler and Brad Sippel and I all attended the MPO CARPSY Fall Forum on October 17. We got updates from Alexandra Andros, the MPO Director, talked about, you know, the MPO's goals for livable communities, prioritizing safety, prosperity, equity, environmental sustainability, expanding transit and pedestrian networks, safe streets, Vision Zero, Regional Safety Action Plan, and aiming for zero deaths by 2040. Safety Action Plan, and aiming for zero deaths by 2040. Talked about the funding, $10 million per year for Surface Transportation Block Grants, $1.5 million for transportation alternatives, and just under half a million for the Section 5310, the senior and disabled transportation. There's a panel on regional transit authorities. And, you know, since 2011, cross-jurisdictional service requires contracts and financial support. And there was talk of how long that takes to actually get in place. There was a panel. Manona and McFarland are each, you know, undertook that, and, and it's, you know, it's like a three to five-year process. You need to, and for a particular grant, you need to notify the DOT that you're going to apply for the grant. And then one year later, you're allowed to actually apply for the grant. And then a year later, you might get that money and be able to actually start planning. There was a session on EV charging stations, and Kathy Coontz from the Office of Energy and Climate Change talked about how if you charge at home, it costs you about 5 cents per mile to power your EV. But if you're at a Level 3 charger, a public charger, because Level 3 chargers are, you know, so much, such a big deal in terms of the infrastructure required, it'll wind up costing you more like 20 cents per mile, which is more than it costs for the 12 to 15 cents that it costs for a typical gas vehicle. That's why the Charge Up Dain County Program is doing the more affordable Level 2 chargers, which, you know, for public charging, you should be able to get probably more like 6 cents per mile charging, which is basically the same as the home chargers except an extra penny per mile roughly due to the excise tax. There was a presentation on road salt, and an interesting factoid is that every ton of road salt costs about $100, but does roughly $3,000 worth of damage to vehicles in the form of rust and, and the roadway and et cetera. Wisconsin uses between 1 and 3 million tons per year, so that's between 3 and 9 million, 3 and 9 billion dollars worth of damage every year. Madison has reduced their salt usage from 12 to 15 tons down to about, I'm sorry, 12 to 15,000 tons down to about 8,000 tons over the last five years. And that might be why people are a little mad at Madison. At the lunch, every table had a little placard with a, with a conversational prompt. I sat at the transit table. The big takeaway from that is, is that the NPO likes to work with municipalities, and, and, you know, we should, we should be telling them, look, this is where we're gonna cluster all our development, and that way they know where they're gonna run the metro lines. And the, the more we can get, you know, kind of a, a known, known development corridor, the better off we are, because then we won't have bus lines changing and, and, you know, the rug being pulled out from under people. So when we do our, our zoning changes, it would be advisable to have a, a transit zoning overlay for that. And that is the end of my update for that meeting.
Thank you very much, Bill. Okay, so we are moving to a standing committees report, and we will start with the Finance Committee.
I have no general report, so I will move to the resolutions. I'll move approval of Resolution R-18125, approving HR Payroll Timekeeping Software Agreement.
Second.
Finance Committee did approve. This is, we've already budgeted for this, but this is basically making, implementing the software. Currently, we, well, so we got an RFP, was put out for five proposals. They did some interviews and some demos. A final vendor was chosen, which is UKG. This is the agreement so that we can get the process underway. It's a 12-month implementation, planning to go live in October 2026. This is replacing Palocity. And basically, this vendor can provide all the key functions for these needs into one service, including police scheduling, with very little manual data entry required. It's currently taking a lot of staff time to do these things, and a lot of time for our police officers who are currently using paper time sheets. So we are going to be modernizing and making this all more time efficient and efficient overall. This is the agreement to make that possible.
Okay, any questions, comments? I have a question. How much is gonna cost the annual subscription of this?
I am not sure.
Application, no? Correct. Misty there, or no? Misty, hi.
I am. So the preapprovals in the packet, I can't pull it up quickly, but there is an amount that's based on a base fee of 260 users, and then we pay an additional fee for every user about that. It is a little bit more than what we currently pay Palocity, but it is within the ballpark of what we currently pay, especially with the efficiencies that we'll gain. We think it's a very good value.
So it's per user, isn't it? We pay like per user, practically?
So we pay a flat fee for those first 260.
Okay.
And then it's a fee per user on top of that.
Ah, okay.
They only charge up, they don't give you a credit for going down. So we put that 260 as kind of our very baseline that we know will always be at that, and then we expect to pay a little bit more on top of that.
Misty, the resolution lists a total base cost of just under $386,000, with a total projected cost over five years of $423,406. That answer question appropriately?
Thank you.
Yep.
So the base cost is, is the implementation cost, isn't it? No?
There's an implementation cost.
The base cost is that...
Is it subscription?
Well, there's, there's implementation cost, then there's the base cost every year, and then there's per employee over 260, right?
Yep, exactly.
Okay. Any other question?
Yeah, Logan. So will, will we then, if we move forward with this, then be getting rid of other subscriptions or services that we already have, like NeoGov or Palocity or Telestaff? Will those be going away? And will that result in savings?
Yes and no. So yes and no. The Palocity software we'll need to keep till we're live. So once we get to that implementation, go live and we're comfortable, then yes, Palocity will go away. NeoGov, we plan to keep the recruitment side of it, because it has access to GovernmentJobs.com, which is kind of an industry leader for recruitment. So we're gonna keep NeoGov for that module, but all the modules from, once it's an official employee beyond, yes, we will be getting rid of those. Telestaff is a UKG product, so we'll be doing an upgraded version that will connect better with the payroll. And then the other software we use is OnBase as a workflow. We will stop using OnBase for this, but we need to keep OnBase because we use it for a lot of other things. So there's no cost savings there, but it is a nice way to streamline the process by getting rid of a third software that won't be needed in this particular process anymore.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R-18125, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries.
And next, I will, just let me pull it up here. I'll move approval of Resolution R-18625, amending the 2025 General Fund Budget, Election Costs, and Clerk Software.
Second.
Finance Committee approved. These are costs that really couldn't be absorbed in the 2026 budget, but there are available funds in the 2025 budget, so we're hoping to cover these one-time costs. This is election equipment for the additional polling location, a notification that goes out to neighbors for those that are gonna have a new polling location, and then kind of an administrative change for some clerk department costs.
Okay, any question, comment? Okay, Logan, go ahead.
Very quick. The notification of new polling locations, how will we be putting that out for the community?
I believe it's postcards.
With what?
Postcard.
So we are, the amount is included here?
Yep, postcard to affected residents for the polling locations that are, for the wards that are affected.
So that one is, is gonna be District 2, isn't it?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Okay, any questions? So this, this new location, polling location is gonna be ready by April or, or November?
November, through the primary.
Ah, okay, oh, okay, okay. Okay.
Sorry. It'll be a 2220 Traceway Drive.
2202.
220, 2202.
Is that the fairways?
It's the Fitchburg Hub.
Oh, it's the hub. Yeah. It's the hub.
The artist formerly known as the hub.
Hey, until we don't have a name, it's gonna be the hub.
It's the Traceway Park.
Yeah. No. Okay, any other question, comment? No? Thank you, Tracy. Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R-18625, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries. Next one. Oh, we did that.
We did that one already, and no other report from Finance.
Okay, so next, thank you. And next we move to Personnel Committee.
We don't have any things for the Personnel Committee other than what you already discussed related to the Firefighters Union going to further arbitration.
Okay, thank you. Public Safety and Human Services.
I'll move approval of Resolution R-18425, amending the 2025 TID Closure Fund Budget, Police Special Response Team Equipment.
Second.
Public Safety and Human Services approved.
Finance approved.
Thank you. What is this day?
We'll let Andrew talk on this. He's, looks like he's online.
Who?
Captain, Captain McCarthy.
Yeah, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, so we have a couple of new members being added to our Special Response Team. It's been quite a while since this team has been nearly as full as we've been authorized. A lot of that's due to attrition over time and our staffing getting to a more comfortable level. These two members are still in need of a protective equipment that we don't currently have, so this, these funds would provide them with protective equipment and some communications equipment to perform their duties on this team.
Thank you, Andrew. And yes, I, I have question, and I met with Andrew and the Chief the other day, and about the special equipment that they need to have, you know, so the vest and the helmet is, you know what I mean? And those one are kind of very expensive. Because, can you explain the difference between the two vests? You know, you have the, the regular vest and the, you know, and this one?
Sure. So all officers are issued a soft body armor Kevlar vest that they wear under their uniform, or as you see it now, it's kind of like an outer carrier with equipment on the outside is the modern, the modern way to wear the uniform. The Special Response Team has a higher threat level, and so the outer carrier that they have has a more ceramic plating inside of it due to the potential elevated threats that they could encounter. Additionally, there's a helmet that they wear, and incorporated in the helmet is a communications headset, so that they can talk hands-free and is more reliable than the typical lapel radio you see hanging off of the patrol officer uniform.
Okay, thank you. Any question, comment? Okay, so we need two thirds of the vote, so I will do roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herbst.
Aye.
Alder Jettser.
Aye.
Alder Ladace.
Aye.
Alder Reigstad.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Andrew.
Okay, so next we move to unfinished business, and we don't have anything to talk about that. And then new business. Do we have anything about new business? No? So then we move to all the district reports. We will start with District 1. Why you pass three minutes?
You're putting them on a timer. Couple of quick things. You know, based on the planning meeting the other day with the additional high-density apartment, those two units, this could be like 1,000 people or more. And I would like our, I'd take Ross to look at, I believe both King James Way and Anton Drive should require some speed control measures because we have 1,000 people that take those streets kind of as a back way, and we would need those. They've asked that we implement those. We wanted them for some time. I think this will drive them. We had, the LA Drive Duns Marsh Neighborhood Association had our annual pumpkin carving on, on Saturday. I can't say enough about this group. We had help from Allied Wellness Partners Church, and pumpkins were donated by Home Depot, IV, and a local farmer, Ryan, I can't remember his last name. And a lot of food was brought. It was a great, great event, and they're harder to carve than you think, those thick, thick pumpkins. But that's a great organization. We really, I encourage people to join that. I miss this, Madam Mayor. We had a resignation on our Parks Committee, Sarah Schreeder resigned.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And I just want to add a plug. One of the things I, I do is Bikes for Kids Wisconsin, you know, we, we had a collection on Saturday, you know, a semi came from Milwaukee, we unloaded it, and today, they loaded up a container to ship bikes to Ghana. You know, they had volunteers, and just a great organization. I encourage you, you know, if you, if you volunteer something that makes a, makes a difference, please consider that, and that's all I had.
Thank you. Okay, so next one is District 2.
As previously mentioned, I attended the EMS Annual Meeting, and I'll echo Alder Gerhart's sentiments. If you haven't seen that meeting, go ahead and look it up and watch it. Yesterday, I had a little tour of the Tower Hill Park Shelter, which was completed, I think, very recently. Last Saturday, there was a bit of a classic car show at the Courtyard. I didn't stop in for that, but I did stop in to the Diaz de los Muertos event, just for a minute, because it was raining and everybody was very crowded under those tents.
The fire, because they participated.
Yes, there was a fire truck there. And I guess just a reminder, this weekend, everybody should remember to turn their clocks back.
When? This weekend? Oh, my God, okay. Thank you, Bill. Gabriela?
No report from me this week.
Okay. Logan?
All right. District 3, we have a couple exciting things going on. As Chad mentioned, of course, Southdale Park Playground is up and running. Very excited to see that. And Rimrock Park was already completed with the playground equipment, and progress is being made pretty quickly, it looks like, on Castle Bar Park in Highfield Reserve. So lots of exciting park projects that are not even McGaw, which we've talked about at length. So love to see that in District 3. Was also able to attend the second annual Nine Bark at the Moon Halloween Block Party over the weekend in Swan Creek. Number of neighbors volunteer organize this thing every year with the last two, and it's grown this year, and they've got a vision for how to keep it going. It's brought a lot of people out there, and great to see everybody coming together. And as one of the organizers said, it's a great opportunity to wear those Halloween costumes more than once, get your money's worth out of it. So there was some extra trick-or-treating, some other events. One of the really scariest things that was out there was somebody had a TV with the Badger game on. That was the scariest decoration on Nine Bark that evening. Also was able to attend, and I should also mention a quick shout-out to Fact TV for getting some great footage of that and doing an interview with one of the organizers. So Fact TV team, you're not dodging a shout-out tonight. I also attended last night the Taravessa Neighborhood Meeting that was at Barnwood Events. There, it's kind of the kickoff to get their HOA going. It was somewhere between 130 and 140 people there, which, when you have to pull out extra chairs for a community meeting on a Monday night, I think that's a great sign. So was able to share some of the updates from what's going on and all the projects that we're working on, on behalf of those neighbors and our entire community, of course. As Alder Jettser mentioned, was able to go to the Greater Madison NPO and Karpsey Transportation Fall Forum. Also new in District 3 as of yesterday, the Food Scrap Stop Program, say that five times fast, is now available at Swan Creek Park. If you would like to learn how to compost, or if you're like my... or if you're like myself, I think I called myself compost curious in a prior meeting. I now have a compost bucket, and so do, I believe, 40-something other folks in the area. You just sign up for free and you get the code to the drop. The trash bins are locked, and then you can dump your waste, your food waste into those buckets, and it is collected and then composted. We've approved that program earlier this year. It was great to see, really good turnout for that, too. By the time I got there, like I said, I think three dozen or so of the free compost buckets had already been given away. So a lot of interest in that. I would also note that Haight Farm Road is now open. There was a temporary closure there due to, I want to say it was utilities related to Uptown Hills. There's a note that there will probably be another closure coming up soon with more details TBD. And then, of course, looking very much forward to the UW Health Meritor Life Point Rehab Hospital groundbreaking on Thursday. As I've said many times, I really think this project will be a true catalyst for Uptown and really bring in some of the employment that will help us develop this into that long-range vision. With all of that, I will turn it over to my fellow District 3 Alder.
Thank you. The only thing that I have is on Thursday evening, I believe starting at 6:30, some of us from council and also the mayor will be over at Madison College, the Truax Campus, doing a meet and greet. So if you are able to come and join, like, come out, the president will give, the new president of Madison College will give a brief hello. And then it'll be just like kind of a free-form style where those of us who can make it will be there. Come chat with us, ask questions, please engage. And then also feel free to engage with the Madison College folks. They have graciously provided food and refreshments for that event as well. So I'm hoping to see folks there.
Going there?
I don't remember off the top of my head who I confirmed.
Yeah?
Okay, so it looks like mostly.
Because there is another event before that we need to go, is the MAB event.
Yep.
Yeah. Sorry.
Yeah.
Thursday's a busy day.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Donald. So this one is in the Truax, isn't it?
Yes, Truax Campus. It's in the foyer area outside of the new, like, Student Life Center.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. And thank you for putting this together, too. District 4.
All right, I've been out of town, so I will be quick. I'm going to echo something that Roger from Ag and Rural said during our meeting, which is just to, I probably should have said this a month earlier, but be aware of just it's harvest season for the farmland. And so the equipment's going to be out. Give them some space, give them some patience. They are working, you will get to Costco on time. If you have to wait five minutes, you can. And other than that, just, I'll echo trick-or-treat hours are four to seven. And just a hearty congratulations to all teachers in the world for Halloween being on a Friday this year.
Oh, yeah. It's true, yeah.
That's all.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. So we are moving to announcement, and what is next in the Cow meeting?
Our Committee of the Whole is October 29th, which is tomorrow night. And it's going to be at 6:00 p.m., which is different than before. It is not 6:30, it is 6:00 p.m. So please be aware of that. Our only agenda item is to discuss the budget amendments from the different Alders and the omnibus budget amendment from Misty. So there's five amendments total. Plus, we'll talk about the rules and how things change once we get to the final vote in council, which will be important for our new Alders. Fun times trying to get that all settled. And then we are, our next meeting again is at a special time. I believe it's November 17. So Chad sent out a calendar invite for that Committee of the Whole meeting, so it's on a different date. But we will be doing interviews for the candidates to replace the seat eight, District 4 seat eight. So please note that that is a special time, and that will be an important meeting. Thanks.
And you will receive in advance, isn't it, the process of the meeting?
Yeah, once that all gets finalized, we'll be sure to share that information out in advance. So we've been having some meetings and are well on our way, but few decisions need to be made yet.
Yeah, so, but we will know what you need to do before the meeting.
Do we have applicants?
Yes, there are two right now. And there is a third one that is, I think, is going to apply, isn't it?
It's on our website.
Yeah, oh, there is in the website.
There's a spreadsheet on our website that shows.
Yeah. Yeah.
For the vacancy, not for the April.
Okay, so our next common council meeting will be November 11. And I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of adjourned the meeting at 8:45 minutes? Wow. Say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carried. Buenas noches.